I would like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Erin Barowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Epsom excused.
Sue Groddick.
Here.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Here.
Stephen Coyle.
Epsom excused.
Andy Selhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance and then we will have opening remarks by Councilwoman Pucci.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask for a moment of silence for all those who were killed in the attack on Israel and their families, and also for those who are kidnapped. I pray for their safe return and also for all innocent victims of this conflict.
We have minutes from the September 25th, 2023 meeting. Does anyone on council have questions?
May I be recognized?
Yes.
Just a couple corrections or additions. On page two, under my comments, I think it's the fourth line where it's regarding Memorial Park. I just wanted to add, because we were specifically asked what we thought of it, that I just wanted, what I said was, I think the concept is good, that it will come down to the cost of the various components. And then, in the same paragraph, the second line from the bottom, and this is regarding an article I had referenced, I had emphasized that what was important about this article was that it was important to remember that there is a difference between making an anti-Semitic statement and actually being an anti-Semite, and that many people unintentionally make these types of comments or jokes and are unaware that there's a problem with what they've said. So with those clarifications, I would make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
To approve the minutes as amended, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say pertaining to an item on the agenda, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Steve Herbig, 4402 South Amber Drive. I guess I'm looking for clarification about the first open session. What was it, last meeting or two minutes ago, there was a resident that came up to speak about an agenda item, but was told it has to be a legislative item. However, on today's and all the other agendas, it states, if anyone has anything to say pertaining to agenda items only. So is it agenda items or strictly legislative items in the first open session?
It's relating to legislation on the agenda so that the public has a way to address the council before we vote on legislation.
Gotcha. Okay. But I distinctly remember, and I could be wrong, that the vote was on agenda items and not legislative items. So maybe, Mary Jo, if I send you an email, you could let me know what date that was passed. I could look at the...
I'd have to look back at the organization meeting, which might not be noted in my comments specifically.
But it's on video, what everybody, what we voted on. It's videotaped, so we could see how the vote went and specifically what that vote was on.
If the organization meeting was, sure, yes.
Yeah, that'd be super. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else in the public have public session relating to an item on the agenda? We will now have reports of committees, commissions, and boards. We will start this evening with the Board of Zoning Appeals, Councilwoman Groddick.
Thank you. I wasn't quite expecting to be first. The Board of Zoning Appeals met on September 21st, and the following three variances were approved. A 140-square-foot accessory structure on the side yard of 9008 Pepper Ridge Drive, a fence installed at 4292 Winter Lane, a fence installed at 4672 Winter Lane. On the October 19th agenda, they have, will be considering three variances. A variance request to allow a fence to be installed past the rear building line at 8817 Orchard Avenue, a variance request to allow a fence to be installed past the rear building line at 4314 Newberry, and a variance to request a fence to be installed past the rear building line at 4575 Sunset Oval. And again, that meeting is on October 19th at 6:00 p.m. And that concludes my report.
Next, we have the Domestic Abuse Commission. I am wearing purple tonight because October is Domestic Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. If you are experiencing domestic abuse, please know that you are not alone. The National Domestic Violence Hotline is available 24/7 at 1-800-799-7233. And finally, tonight, we have the Committee of the Whole report. We did discuss legislation that's up on the agenda tonight. Council did recommend approval of the two resolutions, 2023-22 and 23, that are up for adoption tonight. I will read more about those before we vote on them this evening. And Committee of the Whole meets before regularly scheduled council meetings at 6:15, and all are welcome to attend. We will now have reports of council. We will begin this evening with Councilman Barowski.
Thank you, Council President. First, I want to say thank you for Ms. Pucci's comments on Israel. I am, I think, as many Americans right now, praying for the peace to be restored in Israel amongst the Gaza Strip and the rest of the Middle East. October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Almost 300,000 women in the U.S. alone this year will be diagnosed with some form of breast cancer. About 13% of the female population, 1 in 8 women in their lifetime, will be diagnosed, including over 2,000 men this year as well. Thankfully, advances in early detection and treatments have significantly increased survival rates, so there is hope. By age, the average age of women being diagnosed with breast cancer is the age of 62. The alarming rate of 50% being 62 or younger should not go unnoticed. That means quite possibly there are women as early as 30 or younger that are physically in the prime of their lives and may be diagnosed as soon as this year. Behind lung cancer, breast cancer is the second-leading cancer death among women in the U.S., and this year alone, around 44,000 American women will die from this disease. Some of the risk factors are being overweight or even medically obese after menopause, a heavy lifetime usage of alcohol, as well as, as women get older, their risk increases, as well as race and ethnicity playing a part as well. Please do yourself and your family a favor this month and get tested. If you're concerned, please reach out to your doctors. This past week, I was able to stop up at the Hampton Inn Cleveland Teedman location and speak with management and get a small tour of the facilities. The Hampton Inn, as we all know, suffered a major fire with a lot of water damage last year. Glad to see that their business successfully remodeled and has been strong ever since. I was able to share pictures to my social media for that, and I think just overly, it was really nice to be able to get a tour to see the improvements. I also would like to announce that, just like last year, I'll be working with World Gym, now known as the Ohio Gym, on another Toy for Tots campaign this upcoming holiday season. When I have dates for the boxes being dropped off, I'll make an update at a forthcoming city council meeting. And I want to say personally, thank you to the Marines located in Brook Park for the assistance on this project. Last year, it was very successful, and I couldn't be prouder that Brooklyn stepped up and brought in a lot of toys, books, stuffed animals for the children. So again, thank you for last year, and I'm looking forward to it this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilwoman Groddick.
Thank you. Just two short items that came across my email, so I'm hoping many residents already know about these. Two of my favorite community resources have events coming up. The first is the Cleveland Metro Park's Brookside Reservation has a hike on Saturday, September, or October 21st at 1:00 p.m. And if you are interested, you need to park along John Nagy Boulevard near the spillway and dress appropriately for a muddy trail. I think it's just fun to see some things going on at our Brookside Reservation there. Also, near and dear to my heart is our library, which always has awesome activities, but it really seems like they are stepping up their programs this fall. There are three upcoming programs for children and caregivers. One is called Rock and Read. It's a five-week series, and it starts October 19th, so there's still time to register for it. It will begin at 4:00 p.m., and the target age is preschool through second grade with a caregiver. They're starting another new series called Talk With Me. This one is a little bit more of a time commitment, but it sounds pretty incredible. It's a seven-week series that starts on Monday, so there's still time to register. It goes from 6:00 to 8:30, but it includes pizza, and the ages are 5 to 9. It does not say caregiver required, so I'm thinking it is for children and their families. The description is, "It will improve your child's thinking, vocabulary, language development through talk, play, and fun." So as a second-grade teacher, I would love to see some of our families taking advantage of that. And the third one, also near and dear to my heart in our community, is the Brooklyn Family Night for English-language learners. It takes place Tuesday on October 17th at 7:00 p.m., and families are invited to learn about the library programs and the resources for English-language learners. So I hope our residents will take advantage of the things that are going on here around town, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilman Selhertz.
Thank you. Sticking with the library, the last of our speaker series with the Laurel Garden Club, Friends of the Library, and Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, will be tomorrow night at the library at 7:15. Tenants' numbers for these events have been picking up. We'll probably go and continue them into 2024, February, March, with some spring item agenda speakers. Next fresh fruit, produce, and giveaway at St. Elias will be Tuesday, October 24th. It's supposed to officially start at 3:30. Depends on, once again, when the truck gets there and the workers can get everything organized. They might start at 3:00. That's going to be the last one for this season at St. Elias. That'll be Tuesday, October 24th. Regards to the streetlights, LED conversion, it's probably about 98% done down by Elizabeth and Saybrook. They've got to do some of the post-top ornamental things. We also have work orders put in for some adjustments and everything else. I wish the thing was done. It's not, and then probably even once we're done, we're going to have to go back and look at some other stuff to adjust and everything else. The gift that keeps on giving. Talking about lighting, it's going to be in a different area. I know the mayor's mentioned work about being done on the Memphis Underpass by Lyndale. That's something that's bothered me since the beginning when I've been on city council. Years ago, when West 117th was redone by Horvitz, they actually widened that underpass and put lighting in there. It looked nice back then. That's like probably 30, 35 years ago. Through time, and time's taken its toll on the underpass, and trucks traveling through have managed to hit the conduit, providing power. Few years back, I had David Turner, our first energy rep, which is probably about three reps ago, check for power. There is power. What is shot is the conduit under the bridge and the fixtures. What it also looks like is, when you're driving in from Lyndale or Lakewood, Cleveland, from that side into Brooklyn, it looks like you're driving into the ghetto. I mean, it's just bad. The underpass is in the city of Brooklyn. About 3/4 of it is ours. A quarter of it is Lyndale's. Did my homework before I tried to get into this thing. It should cost us approximately about $15,000. We've had companies come out and actually measure, adjust the light fixtures. There are nine glare, there's four on each side. Now it'll go down to about three on each side. So that's about $15,000 to the city. And then talking about dark things, let's transition to Halloween. Enter if you dare, get into the Halloween spirit by sending us a photo of your haunted home to Halloween contest at brooklenohio.gov. Please include your name and address. Prizes will be awarded. Deadline for submission is October 30th, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Next up, we have Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to thank all the volunteers at the Brooklyn Historical Society. Last month, they had their annual shunpike shop. This was the first that they've had since the pandemic. There's always very interesting things to see, but also many types of items for sale which support the nonprofit. So I thank all the volunteers. Some important dates regarding the election. The election is November 7th. Today is the last day to either register or change your address. The deadline is actually up until 9:30 this evening, and if anyone here would need to do anything like that, the library is open till 9:00 p.m., and you can turn that in over there. Early voting, both in person and by mail, begins tomorrow, October 11th. Regarding our local races, in addition to the mayoral, council, and school board races, there are also the charter amendments issued 29 to 37. Mr. Butler worked with Ms. Ludwig on a webpage that contains the information on each of these amendments. And so if you go to our website, which is brooklenohio.gov, right on the homepage, there's a link, and then you can, for the charter amendments, and then you can actually read more. So thank you, Mr. Butler and Ms. Ludwig, for that. I attended the October 3rd school board meeting that we were all invited to, and I would like to thank the school board members and Superintendent Caleres for the invitation. And the meeting was taped, so you can view it from the school's website. They reviewed the five-year forecast, including the scheduled renewal levies, which are in 2025, 2027, and 2029. They went over the revised March of 2024 proposed bond issue. They're looking at 2.6 mils, which would be, for a $100,000 home, approximately $103.60 per year. If approved, this bond issue would generate $20 million. It would be for 37 years, and they believe the interest rate would be about 5.37%. The board does have a timeline for this, which I won't go into. It's lengthy. And at this meeting, they also reviewed the infrastructure investments that the schools have made since 2020, which total $2.3 million. They touched on the issues relating to the schools, assuming ownership of the current library building, including potential uses. If they didn't use it, would there be a demo cost? And some facility and assessment upgrades of that facility. They also reviewed possible capital projects, which will primarily focus on the high school, which is in dire need of improvements. For any questions, comments, or feedback, you can direct those to Superintendent Caleres Two quick things. One, I did just look up ordinance 2023-4, and it does clearly say, "Public comment on agenda items." And regarding what Councilwoman Selhertz said about the underpass, it is very true that when you are coming in there, it does look like you're entering the ghetto. And one thing that his comments reminded me of, I was part of a team when we brought Moody's in to try and get an increase in our bond rating, and we had them, they were flying in from Chicago, and, you know, we talked through every single little thing and, you know, all possibilities. They basically spent the day here in Brooklyn. And one of the things was, for the person from Key Bank who was picking them up from the airport, we said, "Do not bring them on 71. Go a little bit further." And, you know, we didn't want them having that first impression of our city when we were trying to get our bond rating raised. So this has been a very long time in coming, and I personally do not believe, had it not been for the train accident in East Palestine, that they would not be doing this, because we've gone back to them time and time again. And basically, they say as long as it's structurally sound, that they were not going to do anything. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one thing to add. We have, Keep Brooklyn Beautiful has our final cleanup of our fifth cleanup season this Saturday. We hope you'll join us at 7575 North Cliff Avenue, the medical center in front of Marx. We'll focus on the roadways along Bridge and North Cliff. I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you. Just some brief updates. Pennzeegon continues to prepare the ground across the street where the city hall used to be for the new library. There were some soil issues. Those have been resolved, and they continue moving forward. There is some work that has to be done on the senior center sewage, and that cost will be paid for by the library system, the county, as well as the demolition grant, so that work will be done here in the next month or so as well. Pennzeegon continues to work through the punch list items of our building. They're just about wrapped up with most of the items. There are still some minor things that they are working on. For the city roads throughout the construction season, the concrete is pretty much completed. They're working on final punch list items now. The asphalt work is complete as well. Their work is done. The Brook Park Road construction, the majority of the work in Brooklyn is complete. They're still working on the southeastern side of our, southeastern side of our city, and they'll be completed with that by the end of the construction season. Gray Line continues to work at the new Veterans Memorial Plaza. The park is just about complete. They have one more monument to set, the Blue Star Memorial. All the landscape and the lighting is complete. The grass is coming in nicely. The last thing that we're waiting for is First Energy to drop the electric from their pole, so that we can light the park and put up the flags. We have planned a dedication ceremony for that park on Friday, November 3rd, at 10:45 a.m. The city hired a new housing manager. He started on Monday, October 2nd, so we welcome Lev Kolczitski to the city of Brooklyn. He comes with years of experience, so we're glad to have him on board. He's hit the ground running. He's been out and about quite a bit already, so we're glad to have him here. The natatorium roof replacement is nearly completed. They're just finishing with some metal coping, and that will be finished. That was a project paid for by county grant dollars. A company has purchased what was the Old Pizza Hut property, and a permit's been pulled for that. Looks like the new space will be a sushi restaurant, so they'll be joining the city of Brooklyn here in the coming months, so we're glad to see that space being occupied. Ellet Neon Signs and Services will begin installing their new signs in the next week or so. The installation of those signs will be complete by the end of the month. 7476 Memphis Avenue, the house just here right outside of the front doors of City Hall, they've surveyed it for asbestos. They're waiting for those results. If any abatement is necessary, they will do that, and they'll begin the demolition process on that home, and that will be demolished. And then the city, of course, owns that. The old animal shelter demolition is complete. The area has been graded and seeded. Of course, we are budgeting for a trail expansion and some potential fencing down that trail, and that will be part of the budget work discussions that we have later in the month. As was mentioned by both Mr. Selhertz and Mrs. Pucci, Norfolk Southern is working on the engineering for the bridge repairs, both at the one that borders us with Lyndale, as well as the one on Clinton Road that borders Cleveland. And they have received all the bids Norfolk Southern has. They're in the process of awarding that contract, then securing their insurance and their building risk requirements. Once that is completed, they will then sign their notice to proceed. We hope to see some work on that bridge started very shortly. Chief Melke and myself, as well with our engineer, are meeting tomorrow to begin putting together a pilot traffic calming plan that we've been discussing throughout the last several months, and so we hope to see that implemented here in the coming weeks. Mentioned at the last meeting, 6121 Vandalia. This is a house that was condemned on the eastern side of our city. It did sell at Sheriff's Sale. Mr. Greer and I met with the new owner. His intent is to remedy all of the violations and make that house livable once again, and so we'll be working closely with him. That's been an eyesore on that side of the city for a long time, so it looks like we're at the beginning of seeing that process wrapped up, and hopefully that home made livable once again. The fall tree planting will take place later this week, going into next week, and so those have been delivered, so we look forward to seeing those trees going up around the city or being planted around the city. We have begun the contract negotiations with the unions. Those will take place throughout the fall. We're in the third year of a three-year contract, so we are working through the negotiations for our unions. The Marquardt Lights and Cameras, that's the final item to be done at the Marquardt Park. We were waiting for the soccer season to conclude. That wraps up in the next couple of weeks. Once that's finished, the new lighting and cameras will be installed at that park, and it will be complete. And then, speaking of the rec center, myself, our engineer, and Mr. Bruzy will be meeting tomorrow to go over the request for proposal plan that will be put out for the recreation center upgrades that will be budgeting over the next several years, and that will focus primarily on the natatorium side, so we're looking forward to seeing some work done on that end. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you.
We will now move on with our agenda for tonight. We first have a liquor permit. This is a permit transfer at 10300 Brook Park Road, the BP station.
Move for a position of no objection.
Second.
For a position of no objection, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Under old business tonight, we have Resolution 2023-22. This is on third reading and up for adoption. Requesting the county fiscal officer to advance taxes from the proceeds of the 2023 tax levies pursuant to the Ohio Revised Code, Section 321.34. This is an annual resolution to advance the tax proceeds for the fiscal year 2024.
Move to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Next up, we have Resolution 2023-23. This is also on third reading and up for adoption tonight, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Cuyahoga County Board of Health for Public Health Services for the years 2024 and 2025. This is an increase of $7,400 from last year's contract. Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
To adopt, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
And finally, under new business tonight, we have Ordinance 2023-28. This is on first reading, amending sections within Chapter 1349, Flood Damage Prevention of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Brooklyn to reflect the updated city hall address.
And I'll make a motion that we amend the two sections, 1349.013 and 1349.051, just to add the zip code 44144.
Second.
To amend, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Groddick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
At this time, we will have the second public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
Rob Slattery, 660 Zerby Service Drive. First off, Councilwoman Pucci, I appreciate you giving that update on the school board meeting, and I appreciate your ongoing support with the schools. A question about the Brooklyn magazine that went out this week. I'd like to know what the cost of that was to the city, number one, and number two, I'd like to know what the logic was of having an ad for a Cleveland charter school in a Brooklyn magazine. It's counterproductive to the school. It gives people an option to pull their children out of the Brooklyn School District, which out of the Brooklyn School District, which hurts the school district. So I don't think that was very well thought out. So I'd like answers for both of those. As far as the jail goes, the chief gave an update that we're getting close with the state approval and opening that up. Is the contractor on the hook for any of the overages and extra cost of housing prisoners in different cities while it has not been open? Another question about City Hall and/or the police station, there's still a big generator back there. Is this building or the police station still run on a generator? So I'd like to know that. And then lastly, a resident reached out to me about some of the proposed upgrades in the memorial park. And they threw out the idea of pickleball. So I said that I would bring it up at the meeting. So I've mentioned pickleball. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Vic Cardito, 7439 Outlook Avenue. With all the money they're spending, the government, it'd be nice to see if they'd build up Medicare and Social Security some. And the other thing that's throwing money away, we give these college kids, pay off some of their loans. A whole lot of people that went to college had to pay off their loans, old and new. Pull money out of the government to do this is a whole lot of people insane. Same thing with the thing I mentioned before, immigration. We tried to close the borders, but since our new president's been in, it seems like they're a lot more open. And these people evidently, they're getting credit cards or whatever, prepaid cards and phones when they cross the border. But, and then they're getting what, court dates that are two years in the coming or whatever. It'll be easy to find them. Any response on the heated entryway here that I asked about? I was curious on that. And then back to the old thing, the streetlights. Andy's a wonderful guy, done a heck of a deal with us. And he's still working on it with these guys. I talked to the First Energy guy last week, the week before, when he was here. And when I mentioned the lights, how they work, and they're not as bright, they don't have to light up as large of area. It was like a deer in the headlights. What are you talking about? And I was down to my friends, he's got a shop in Cleveland. Look at the streetlights out there, LED. Totally different. At night, they light up so much better. You can see them down Flowerdale, all over the place. And speaking with Andy, and he updated me with that it was a battle with First Energy, and here's your choices. Going down further, like you said, there's going to be adjustments. For any reason, we can't push it yet. If it costs more money, great. But I would like brighter lights. I go down State Road, it's lit up dynamite. Bridge Road is quite nice. Nothing like State Road. And the same thing, like my front yard is dark. And I have a telephone pole right in my yard. And I'm the dark side of the moon. So why First Energy stuck, here's your choices, which the guy told me, here's your choices. I go, why? Makes no sense to me. And Andy battled them too, so. Don't know what to do, but everybody, too many choices, these big businesses. Here's your choice. And we have to bite the bag, Miss Fortune. Thank you.
Steve Herbig, 4402 South Amber Drive. Mayor, a couple of questions for you. This was brought to my attention by another resident, and they are unfortunately very ill and can't attend city council meetings. They wanted to know, how many properties has the city of Brooklyn sold to the Big Creek Conservancy/Big Creek Connect? And why are these properties being sold to them? The Memphis Road Diet that we're talking about, there's been claims that it's going to make the road safer. Has there been any studies to indicate that this would somehow make the road safer for cars, pedestrians, and bikers? And along those lines, my question, has there been a bike lane usage study for Memphis and Ridge? Because straw holes or just conversation with residents, it seems that many, many people are against bike lanes on Memphis and Ridge. I mean, I use Pearl Road almost daily, and there's never anybody biking on those, even in the summer. I mean, it's extremely rare to see a single person use the bike trails. And then, Mayor, in the last newsletter that went out, you mentioned that with the increased desire for additional housing in Brooklyn, that there will be attached/row homes that are going to be built at the at-bat property and also on additional city-owned properties. So where would these additional homes be built on which specific city-owned properties? And then lastly, how does somebody become a member of the Brooklyn Historical Society? I'd like to join, and I have absolutely no idea how to do so. Thank you.
Cindy Whitey, 4164 Spring Crest Drive. Good evening. Quite a few residents have reached out to me regarding a flyer that was left at their home regarding issue 30. I personally did not get it. Someone had given me a copy. And while I'm not here advocating for or against this issue, it seems that residents are confused by the overwhelming content in the flyer left at their homes and what exactly the difference is depending on a yes or a no vote. One example mentioned in the flyer was if an individual who lived in Brooklyn, for example, 40 years, yet never being a registered voter, he or she decides after 40 years, they want to become a registered voter and run for office. They would either have to wait another three or five years in order to run. The statistical probability of this scenario seems highly unlikely. In addition to raising a question of why a resident who had lived in Brooklyn and has never been a registered voter and/or voted would suddenly take interest. Forty years is a long time not to have been engaged and/or interested in participating in an electoral process that affects the place where they have lived. Another item that I would like to address is regarding a statement that was made about college students who go away in or out of state to attend college for four years and the implication that they would not be eligible to run for council for another three or five years after graduating, depending on the passage of issue 30. In a publication written by All In, which is a national, nonpartisan initiative of civicnation.org, covering college students between the ages of 18 and 24, it states, "The national average of collegiate students voting absentee or while they are away at college in 2020, in the 2020 election, was 66%. This was a 14% increase from 2016. In 2022, the college student absentee voting rate was 87%, which was again a significant increase. Additionally, this percentage is expected to increase yet again in upcoming elections." Based on these statistics, it is apparent that college students still maintain their home address, also known as permanent address, while attending college, whether it be in an in-state or out-state college, and vote as absentee. Issue 30, regardless of whether passed or not, would not and should not affect the ability for a young person to run for office if they so choose upon graduating from college after four years. This also holds true for individuals who choose to serve in the military. Although the details of issue 30 have been explained numerous times, I still believe that the electors of Brooklyn deserve the right to choose whether or not to vote to change residency from three years to five years, and if this should be included in the charter. I understand, as Councilmember Pucci explained, this is all on the website. However, I would kindly ask our law director, Kevin Butler, if he would briefly explain for the record the true intent of the recommendation for the change that was approved by both the Charter Commission as well as council, and what it means with regard to the change from three years to five years, along with residency requirements. Thank you.
Anybody else for public session?
Have you recognized?
Yes, you may.
All right. Mr. Butler, I'll give you time to look that up, and then I'll have you answer the question at the end, if you don't mind. I'll just run through these very quickly from the several questions. The Brooklyn Magazine did not cost the city anything. That was done by a company called Cleveland Magazine. They contacted us in the early part of this year, and we've been working with them throughout the year to put that together. They did multiple interviews. They were responsible for all the advertising. The city had nothing to do with the advertising. It was all on Cleveland Magazine to do it. I thought it was a nice piece that came out that really highlighted what was going on in the city. The only expense that we had was to purchase the ad that everyone will see in the magazine once they get it. As far as the generator that's out back, that is a temporary generator. The permanent generator that time has been pushed five different times as to when we're supposed to receive it. The latest update we have, it was supposed to be here September 1st. The company that is supplying the generator has not gotten back to us with an actual time. And so Panzeka is still working with that. Those generators right now, if you were to order that, it's a 36-month wait. Of course, we ordered ours a long time ago. So that's one of the biggest pieces that's still here. That does not run the building. It's just a backup generator for, in the case the power goes down. As far as the housing of the prisoners goes, there are still expenses that we're debating back and forth with Panzeka on. The actual housing of the prisoners would not be part of that. As far as pickleball in Memorial Park, that is going to be part currently, as it stands right now, that is going to be part of the master plant upgrades, with the tennis courts or the new location for the, well, it's the same location, but the upgraded tennis courts will have flexibility for pickleball, tennis, as well as volleyball. So that is planning to be part of that. As far as the number of properties sold to the conservancy, I'll have to find that out. I don't know it off the top of my head. There haven't been any this year that I'm aware of. Most of them have been sold to do just that, to conserve them and also to help with flooding. Mr. Rowan, if you want to add something on that at the end with that, he's been involved in many of those. That's the purpose for those. As far as the safety for the road diet, there have been multiple studies that have been done. I'll also be glad to send this to you as well by the Ohio Department of Transportation. There's a lot of myths out there about road diets, and I'll include that as well. But overwhelmingly, road diets that are done around the country, safety improves dramatically. And you'll see that in the ODOT reports that I send you. As far as a usage study for the bike lanes, we have not done a usage study for them. And bike lanes are only a proposal. It's not 100% that we're going to do those. But that potentially could be part of it. As far as the additional housing here in the city, as far as city-owned property, the city itself will not build any housing. If we do decide to sell or council decides to sell to a housing developer, that's, those would be the ones that would do it. The up-to-back property was mentioned, as well as this property over here has been rezoned that we're talking about with the Zambori houses. So those are the two city-owned pieces of property that potentially could see that in the future. As far as the Historical Society, you can stop by the Historical Society anytime they're open and you can join. There's a nominal fee for that. But you can see Mrs. Steppich. She'll be happy to help you out with that. As far as the lighting goes for the city, as Mr. Selhertz mentioned, that's an ongoing thing. There will be adjustments that are made as we go through here. It has been a little difficult working with First Energy. Mr. Selhertz has showed the patience of Job working through that, and he continues to do that. But we will continue to see those adjustments moving forward. All right. So, Mr. Butler, if you could answer the question regarding issue 30? That'd be great.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I really can't answer the question as to what the intent of the Charter Commission was, because I'm not a member of the commission and didn't have a say in that. The Charter Commission's rationale for recommending adoption of all of the charter issues that were put before you is found on the webpage that Councilwoman Pucci referenced. In the final report of the Charter Commission, which is dated July 10, with respect to that particular item, the Commission wrote in its final report as the rationale, excuse me, the Commission recommends two changes to this section. First, the Commission endorses the idea that candidates for election and by extension appointment to council be residents of Brooklyn for two more years than is currently required under the Charter before taking office. The second recommendation involved term limits, and that recommendation is not applicable to this conversation and is not before the voters this fall. But the language of the Charter itself, this is just my interpretation, by the way. I'm not an ultimate arbiter of this. A court would be an ultimate arbiter of this, likely the Court of Appeals of the Supreme Court. Is that the language in the existing charter, which is unchanged by this amendment, is meaningful, as is all statutory language? It's intended to be meaningful. It's not intended to be overlooked. And so there are two requirements in our existing charter with respect to qualifications for candidates for council. One is that they be, for at least three years, residents of Brooklyn prior to their candidacy. The second is that they be, for at least three years, registered voters, also known as electors of Brooklyn, for three years prior to the candidacy. Those two terms are used in the existing charter. And were the term elector to be discarded, it wouldn't be used. And so therefore, it's my opinion, just as someone who has the job of reading statutes and other code, like charters all the time, that the words are there for a reason. The word elector is there for a reason. You have to be both a resident of the city for at least three years if you decide to run for council, and you have to be an elector, a registered voter of the city, for three years prior to running for council. The only change before the voters this fall is whether to change the number from three to five. That's it. There is no other language change found within that section that's before the voters. So the question for the voters, in my opinion, in my reading of it, is, do we want to increase from three to five the number of years required for candidates standing for election or appointment to council to be both residents and electors? And if the voters approve that question, that means that the answer is yes. And if they say no, it remains three. But otherwise, I couldn't opine on what the intent of the Commission is other than what they put in their report to council.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Just to add a little bit more, Mr. Herbig, you asked about the Historical Society. They're open limited hours. It's Tuesday afternoon. If it didn't change after COVID, it was two to five. But the next general meeting is October 25th at the Historical Society, and that's at 7 p.m. Thank you.
Yes, Andy.
For Vic, to kind of fill you in a little bit more, the whole streetlight thing started probably about 2018. There was a presentation by Ohio Municipal League down in Akron. I went to that. That was presented by Real Term Energy. Probably about a month, two months later, there was Tango Lighting of California. There were two options of how we could go. Tango was more aggressive, wanted to actually take First Energy to court. There were one or two cities up here in the Cleveland area. I think they went that way. They still haven't gotten any further. Dealing with First Energy, they go back to with the types of heads and everything else. They're like, hey, the tariffs say this. This is what we can do. Real Term came up with a design for us. Like we're saying, we're not done yet. We're going to be adjusting things to it. We're going to be adjusting things to it. When we dealt with Real Term, with the principal, Kerry Wilson, he mentioned if they were installing it, they would have been done in two weeks. First Energy has a guy in a truck. Besides, if there's a storm or something else, it's taken forever. Even with our change orders that we have in, we get a request to put in a change order. It comes back, then we get a request for an invoice. It's got to go through our administration, through its process, and then they're going to schedule it. So there's some people that I've told, yeah, we've got it in the works. They got a pink or orange ribbon around their pole. I drive, I buy each day to see if they've done something. It's just like molasses. I'm serious. I wish it was done. It's not. I've got my name stuck to it. I want it to be done as the best it can. We're not done. No, I'm not, but I'm just letting you know exactly what's up. It's been kind of painful. But that's what, I'm not going to make it a dialogue, but there's polls on bid off. I've got a lady that helps us with problem situations. There's a poll on bid off that was in somebody's yard. She's told us like for 15 years. So, and called the lady down in Columbus, I know it got out, plus additional ones. So we've got some tools that we're working with. The rep that we have now with First Energy, he's wonderful. Same-day responsive now within the hour. Couple people before, you might hear them from a week or two or three, and then it'd be like, why didn't you look into it yet? So it's an ongoing process. It's just painful.
Anybody else on council? Yes.
Can you, I don't think your mic's on. Just flip the switch on the top.
Okay, thank you. Just to add, Mr. Butler did a little bit of research, and for Big Creek Connects, we haven't transferred. The city hasn't transferred any property to them in recent years. Now, West Creek Conservancy, there's been three separate parcels that have been transferred either by the city or the land bank to them or sold in recent years. And just to clarify on the magazine, the city paid for postage and then for the ad. So it's two things. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on council? Mayor or directors? Make a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn, Erin Barowski.
Yes.
Sue Grodick.
Yes.
Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Couldn't read my Irene.